Folks, I've got it's five o'clock, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is accept or modify the agenda. Any discussions, questions?
Chairman, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Action Agenda: Award Contract to Real Synergy LLC Consulting Services for Superintendent Search. I know you, everybody has read over this, I hope.
Mr. Chairman, we need to go back to consent.
Oh, did I miss it? I sure did. Sorry. Any questions or comments on a consent agenda or a motion to accept it?
I would move that you accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wells. We'll move on to Real Synergy. On October 25th, 2019, the Warren County School Board issued a request for proposals for consulting services for the superintendent's search. The Warren County School Board received nine proposals for the consulting services on November 15, 2019. The Warren County School Board interviewed two of the firms who submitted proposals on Monday, January 6, 2020. One of the two firms interviewed, the school board selected one firm to be contract with for the consulting services for the superintendent's search. The recommendation is the school board contract with Real Synergy LLC an amount of $11,000. Real Synergy LLC will provide the following services for the Warren County School Board: They will interview stakeholders as identified by Warren County School Board in development of superintendent profile; facilitate a public forum in the development of a superintendent profile; development of superintendent profile; develop and distribute superintendent posting; develop the application; recruit and screen individuals based on the superintendent profile; suggest and develop interview processes, including sample questions; provide review of application preliminary background checks on potential candidates; and initial verification of credentials; develop stakeholder survey of input, calendar of events regarding the superintendent; and updates regarding the superintendent's search for posting on the school's division website; provide onsite services, plus be present for all interviews of potential candidates; and provide consultations on the candidate compensation and other considerations. At the bottom here, we have the Superintendent Search RFP, you have the Real Synergy Agreement for the Superintendent Search, Superintendent Search RFP Responses Received, and then Tentative Superintendent Search Schedule. Questions, Lord?
I don't have any questions. Ms. Ballard's not here, so I'm the only one who was here the last search when we utilized Real Synergy. In the interview, they, they along with Virginia School Board Association, the only two that do only Virginia searches, which is one of the factors that we felt. The price is comparable, their services last time, they are very, very much want to see what the public has to say. They, they will interview our, you know, some of our frontline personnel, our administrators, principals, assistant principals, and that kind of thing, and gather their information and create a profile for us to, to create a job, not job description, but a, but an RFP or an application and that kind of thing. So, I, I feel very comfortable that they, they are the, the group that we should go with.
I would concur with that because of interviewing the public. And these, and these climate of Warren County right now, I think that's a necessary thing that we need to do through them. And then, I was, and both of those fellows are former superintendents, so they kind of know the deal. Whereas the school board, I mean, the school board association might not be as vetted as they are, so.
Okay. Point taken.
I agree. They seem to be very passionate and anxious to get, talking with everyone in our community and see who's going to be a good fit.
I agree with all three of you wholeheartedly. They came in and they were full of fire and energy. Very well spoken. They do want to talk to everybody. I mean, they-
They cast a very broad net.
Yes. They, you know, personal interviews, internet surveys are going to put out some type-
Public hearings.
-of public hearings. And there was one, or it was a written form if you couldn't, if you didn't have access to internet. So, I mean, I believe, I believe it's the right, right people at the right time and the right choice for us. Any other discussion?
I betcha that he will be in here, and if he's got downtime, he'll be out on that sidewalk trying to get somebody in here. That's just the way he is.
I believe you, Mr. Rinaldi, I believe you. Alright. Anything else? No. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, if you're ready for a motion.
Yes, sir.
I would move approval to give him to award contracts for consulting services for superintendent search to Real Synergy LLC in the amount of $11,000. And that Arnold M. Williams Jr., School Board Chairman, be authorized to sign.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Let's do, let's, let's take a roll of all votes please. Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rinaldi?
Aye.
Dr. Pence?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, before we move on from this agenda item, Real Synergy is going to be here Tuesday and Wednesday next week, so if I have not reached out to you yet in order to schedule an interview, I will be in touch or somebody from my office will be in touch to do that.
Very valid point.
Tuesday and Wednesday, sir, that's January 20-
Second.
21st and 22nd.
Next item on the agenda is our work session, and it's discussion of proposed, or a process used when making decisions regarding weather. Mr. Mitchell?
I'm going to do my best to describe what we do. I'm going to, I know everybody wanted to keep everything brief, and I'm sure everybody's going to have different questions. Some people are more experienced with what we're doing, and some people are new to it. So, jump in. And then, when I get kind of through my spiel, I've got some stuff I'll share with you. It's just kind of, it's data that supports what we do and kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at and what we're looking for. So, basically, we start tracking weather events typically about a week in advance, sometimes more, sometimes less. We do this by observing weather patterns, we monitor NOAA's forecast discussions. Once we deem that we have a credible storm, then we'll have a transportation team meeting to determine, okay, where do we need to, where are our points of interest, where are our concerns, are they upper elevations or southern swings of the county? And when, and that's a pretty brief meeting, but it's basically assigning who's going to go check out what. That process is typically two, two individuals. That's myself, and I typically take the western portion of the county and the southern portion of the county. My shop foreman, Jerry Smith, he takes Friesland Mountain and that path because he lives in Chester Gap. So, it just works, and I'm so upset about that. In some instances, if we look at a storm, it's rare that we get weather in the northern portion of the county that we don't get somewhere else. In the event that we do, or we feel like it might be sporadic, I bring in my route coordinator who actually lives in Stevens City, and he actually takes that area. But the primary function for him with the role in weather as a route coordinator is he's kind of my second. In the event that if, if I wreck a car or from IT just happens to have internet down or something that, you know, at 2:00 in the morning, Tim wouldn't know. So, we have, we still have a way to shut down schools, contact media. So, that's, that's kind of the game plan with him. When we're running those roads, people, I don't think always realize what we're trying to do. The first thing we're doing is looking at ambient air temperatures, and we're comparing that to what was really projected and forecasted. Is it real? Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. We're monitoring road conditions themselves, pretreated, non-pretreated. Pretreated roads, we react to much differently than if it's not a pretreated road. Road temperatures are huge for us. If, if road temperature's 40 degrees, it's gone for two inches for snow, we don't care. We'll go, we're good. But if it's 31 degrees, we gotta, we gotta talk. We also look at surrounding counties as well. They, we will always make the decision that's best for our school system and what's best for our students and our safety. That being said, if, if I'm thinking, you know, we, maybe we can go on a two-hour delay and everybody else in the world was saying, "We gotta close," what am I missing? And it's really kind of a checks and balance thing. And, and it's pretty common within the counties. There's some times, for example, Falk here, you know, I'm calling them going, "Hey, look, this portion of the county for you is not good." You know, and, and we're really good about sharing relationship, or sharing data and having those relationships. And the one thing that I'm probably the most proud of for us is our relationships with the county, the mountain crews, VDOT, the other school systems. That is a key factor to us being successful when we make these calls. Once we've done those road observations, we typically meet about 4:30 in the morning. We compare notes, we're then comparing with what those forecasts were versus what we're actually seeing. And then, we have to go through kind of a checklist, and I'll actually pass these out for you. We do a school closing and assessment, kind of an assignment of what we see, and that's based on forecast. And it's basically documenting what we're seeing, what's predicted, advisories, any other concerns that we may or may not have. Once we've kind of gathered all that up, then we make a call to the superintendent at about 5:00 in the morning. At that point, we typically will have some level of recommendation, but really it's a big data sharing point, and it's like, hey, this is what we see. We're kind of the eyes and ears of, okay, we feel like this is where we're at, but this is why. We don't just call up and go, "Hup, it needs to be closed," or "It needs to be a two-hour delay." It's, it's a sharing of data and what we have there. After that decision's made, the route coordinator will activate the all-call. VDOT's notified, they're second on the list if, if we're going on a two-hour delay, for example. I may have a, let's say Cindy's Way on Blue Mountain may be really greasy for us. And so, I make one call to VDOT and go, "Hey, I need some help. We're going two-hour delay, what time can you get me some trucks and can you help me?" And I can tell you that good relationship with them has let us go to school many a times when other school systems have closed, because they will scramble and get out there and help us out. And that's a big help and tip of the hat to VDOT for us. After we've notified VDOT, we notify Warren County Public Schools Administration and staff, we notify Warren County staff as well, because again, we work with the mountain crew, and because we also run the shop piece of it, we're also maintaining their plow trucks, their salt spreaders and everything else. So, we, we've got lots of hats going on there, and we got to keep everybody in communication. We follow that up with notifying the media outlets. That process from the all-call to the media outlets, one average is about eight to 10 minutes. When I first came there, it was about an hour. So, we've come a long ways. That's really the process. Just some notable points for us that you may or may not know. Obviously, student safety is number one, that's our priority, that's, that's our focus. We also, we put a lot of emphasis on the parents and the students' ability to even get to that bus stop. You know, the roads can be great, but can they get there? And then, something that's really kind of played into the factor more the past couple of years that used to not be is student attendance. You know, we have areas that have, you know, high-density populations, and if, if they're not going to be able to get to school because they're not going to be able to make that bus stop, that it is, it is a value. Is that worth canceling school, or is it worth going? And that's where you look at the superintendent and go, "Hey, this area is not, you know, not functioning for us." So, just little tidbits, this county's 220 square miles. I think myself and Jerry, we do a pretty good job covering that in a couple hours' time. One of our biggest challenges is elevation. We're at about 600 feet above sea level where we're at right now, we go 10, 12 miles to the east, and you're at about 1,800 to 2,000 feet. So, when you start talking that much elevation change, I think it was April in 2014, it was 40 degrees in town, and we had four and a half inches of snow on the mountain and it was pouring down. I've seen a little bit of everything there. The last piece I wanted to just point out was that we don't just, we don't just cover snow. We cover wind chills, rain, river streams, small floodings, power outages, wind advisories. If we've got high winds coming up, we think we're going to have power out, there's chainsaws in the trucks, there's a chainsaw in the truck in my car, and we're out there making sure whatever we've got to do to get the kids to school. This little packet, I can kind of go through it real quick, but it's really more for your review. The school assignment or assessments as far as the closings, this is the stuff we're looking for, what, what the precipitation is, road pretreatments, current road conditions. You'll notice a lot of this is based on elevation below or above 1,000 feet. The second page and the reason I included this is if one of your constituents may call you and say, "Hey, why did we do a two-hour delay last Tuesday?" We track this stuff, we have folders since, I've been here since 2011, any day that we've closed, I have this data. And I can bring this up, I can email it right to you, and then you'll have the assessment. Within that, you'll see what, whatever the forecast of weather's were, whatever advisories were in place, if there were warnings, if there's, if the radar does anything weird, I'll typically include that too. And sometimes there'll just be pictures of road conditions, but that's something that's available for you at any time. And the last thing I stuck in here is just, a lot of times we get asked, you know, what do we use for, for our resources for information? We like NOAA, we compare with others, we're not just on NOAA. NOAA tends to use the European models a little bit more, and, and they seem to be more accurate for our area, but that's not always the case. This first page is some of the discussion stuff that we follow, we're reading that constantly. Your second page is what we're actually seeing, when we're making a forecast or we're trying to predict or compare. And then, the third page is just a river assessment, I don't know if anybody's ever seen that or not, but where we actually monitor the, the river levels. We've done this long enough and seen it enough, we know when we're in trouble, we know when we're going to lose Housville, we know when we're going to lose Buck Mountain. And that stuff, for the most part, we've never knocked with a school, I don't think, since I've been here because of a road closure, we rerouted everything. Even when we lost Housville until April 18, 2011, we still rerouted around Housville and got everybody to school. So, it was a little ugly, but we got everybody through. Any questions? Clear as mud.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Mitchell?
Do we still have the snow routes? Are we still utilizing that?
We do not. To be honest, the way our routes are right now, we don't, we don't need them. It, it really doesn't, it kind of goes back to like that attendance thing. For example, if we implemented a snow route, one of the first things we would do is probably take half of Friesland Mountain out of the equation. If we did that, we'd probably lose four or five hundred students. So, it just, it's really for us, it's not beneficial.
Anything else from Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you.
If you have any questions, please reach out to me, I stuck my card there. And certainly for new members, I think most of the past, or current members have been to transportation. But come check us out. I think our facility's pretty impressive and what our staff does there is pretty amazing every day.
Mr. Mitchell and his group also take images, photos of the roads in the mountains whenever they're out, so if you ever need evidence that there's snow, then he's probably able to board that to you.
And we run cameras on our vehicles as well, so I mean, we have video and still images.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. We appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you for letting me.
You're welcome. Alright. Next item is Skyline High School update on academics review. Ms. Shepherd and Dr. Smith?
Okay, so I'm going to start. As you know, two of our schools are accredited with conditions. Our goal is that all of our schools are going to be accredited. So, tonight, we are going to hear from Dr. Smith about Skyline High School's initiative to improve their, to decrease chronic absenteeism. And then, in February, we will hear from Mr. Goodwin from E. Wilson Marson Elementary School about their efforts to improve their academic achievement. So, Dr. Smith?
Alright. Just a little background, there's a meeting held on November 6 to review our academic review findings of the six reports. The members that were there, Ms. Shepherd, Ms. Rudesil, Ms. Baker, my guidance director, and one of my APs, Ms. Brockman. The documents that were reviewed at that time was a array of reports, looked at reports from the power school, a parent letter, said invitations out to parents when they get involved in a, in an attendance committee. We had minutes from the student cabinet that I made with students. Basically, I'm meeting with the, the officers of the classes, we meet together, and we talk about how can we get your fellow students here, what can we do, and we're just working with them to try and get another perspective. We also are doing parent meetings, I have a parent group. We've met twice so far in discussion of this wide range of topics we talked about, but it's very enlightening to hear their perspective. And then, now we do a weekly phone blast every Sunday, I send phone calls out with information for the week and also the importance of attendance to get that out there, keep getting it out there. And the overall findings and problem that was identified, as you know, is our chronic absenteeism, received what was called a Level 3 performance, which means accredited with conditions. So, that's kind of a little background. And the essential actions of that report, we put add attendance expectations for accurate reporting of attendance to the staff handbook, basically as a reminder to teachers to make sure that they are following the protocol when entering attendance, just a refresher for them to do that. That can be seen on our footprint for success that we have on the website. We then did annual staff training conducted on the attendance protocol. We had a faculty meeting on November 21, where we went through, again, the protocol for how to take attendance. Analyze attendance data monthly to the, students will track frequently absent and prioritize students requiring Tier 2 and Tier 3 levels of support. Students are at the Tier 2 level, having, Ms. Shepherd, I'm going to have to get my math here. Tier 2 level students have missed-
Nine days.
Nine days. That'd be for the whole year, right?
Yeah, so 18 days total for the year, but they've missed nine days at this point, so, yeah.
And those students are students that we have a mentor, a teacher assigned to, to contact with them, to meet with them. It's usually their, their first block teacher or a teacher that they feel comfortable with. They meet, they talk about, you know, "Glad to see you here," trying to do all this and all that, just to get information from the student, how we can get them there. And the kids that are Tier 3 levels, those are the ones that are very chronically absent. We have some students that are very, very, well, have attendance issues. Doing designated attendance team comprised of myself, assistant principals, administrative representative, my attendance subcommittee to meet monthly. Ms. Brockman does this, she's my assistant principal. She has this committee meet, they've met twice so far that I'm aware of, and they're talking about what incentives, what can we do at the school level to help get the kids into school. Alright, and looking at some of the things that are already in progress in, that are current practices of Warren County schools, you know, simple things like teachers greeting the students as they enter the classroom, establishing those relationships with those students right from the get-go. I actually have two assistant principals or my dean at the two entrances to the school in the morning, open the door and say, "Welcome, how you doing?" Every single kid that comes into school. And other, I talked about weekly emails, phone blasts to parents, and then again, the teacher mentors that I've just discussed about. And to document that, we have a Google form that the teachers fill out that tracks their, their times they met with a student, what they talked about, you know, what are some things that could we could do, or just some ideas. So, all that is in a Google, a Google form that I can look at. And we have even gone to several homes, kids who do not want to come to school, and we call their parents and then, you know, some say, "Well, we just can't get him there." Well, I say, "Do you mind if I come to your house and make your son up?" And the parents have been, been pretty effective, because when the principal's standing there at the front door, almost at their bedroom door, opening it up and say, "Well, aren't you in school?" The parents get a good kick out of it, and the kids work for the kids, they don't want us coming back to their house, so. But I know all of us, all of our, my administrative staff has had to do that, so we're doing whatever we can to get them there. The attendance committee with the parents, like I said, two meetings thus far, parents were surprised at the number of students who missed substantial amounts of time. Of course, the parents that responded to my, my letter, I sent 890 letters out to every, every family, every parent to come in and let's talk about this, let's discuss this. The parents that did, that did respond were the ones, obviously, their kids come to school, but they wanted, and the reason for wanting to be on, be on this committee is to help, what can they do to help others see the value of what it is to be at school on time every day? And let's see, last meeting held with Mr. Haynes, who's the truancy coach, to provide more details on the truancy, he talked to the parents, went over the whole truancy issue and the process of how it works. Alright, I think everybody talked about most of this. Some things that we've done, like I said, developed the principal's cabinet with the class officers. I have done an interview with the royal examiner, I've been in an article, or been interviewed for the Northern Virginia Daily, I had an article in the paper about that. Meetings held with students and parents to develop an attendance success plan. When I created this a few weeks ago, I personally met 66 students and their, and their parents to come up with a success plan, what can we do to get them there? And we try to be very creative in how we can get them to school. And the second attendance meetings are usually held with a parent, just so you know, with a parent, student, and Mr. Haynes, and he again at that meeting, when we talk, we're still talking about plans of how can we get them to school. Nothing punitive, but it's just trying to get them to realize the importance of what they're missing when they're not in, in the classroom. I know a lot of things are online, but being online at home is not the same as being in the classroom like you know with an instructor. And also, my hat goes off to Ms. Berger, my attendance secretary. She, she is amazing for what, what she does. She notices by his parents, sends letters to parents, reaches out to parents, and this is every day. She makes sure that she has some type of reason given by the parent why their student isn't there. And just the current policy also, this is found in the Code of Virginia, basically for excused absence, just so you know, a parent just has to be aware and support their student's absence. And that's the same in the Warren County policy states there. It does say that what is excused up there for obvious reasons, those listed there would obviously be excused. Then you have the compulsory attendance procedures, which is basically the same thing. Whenever a student fails to report to school on regular scheduled school day and no information has been received by the school personnel, Ms. Berger usually, she will contact them to find out what's going on. So, going forward, continue teacher mentor program, continue to meet with students and parents, send my phone annoyance calls to, calls to people every Sunday, which I'm sure every single one of them will listen to the entire thing.
Now, if they have siblings, they get it twice?
Yes.
Nice.
And I want to, the next couple of weeks, I want to schedule an interview with Royal Examiner, who we've been in Virginia Daily again, to just base, to give an update from my previous interviews of the progress and what we're doing. It is getting better. It is getting better. So. So, guys, is there any questions?
Well, I'm sure you have data on the reasons for their being absent. What are some of the most common ones?
We get a lot of them, and just only got a bit. They're bored. The biggest thing is just they're, they're just, they're bored when they're at school. And that all comes down to, as we talked about before, is improving instruction. So, that's, if we can work on that, which is something else I've worked with Mr. Fox and Ms. Shepherd on, do that, that'll help to bring them in, to get them there. But, yeah, it's a wide array of excuses.
Transportation is one of them. They're missing us and they don't have other transportation. They're sick, there's some of those, yeah.
Yeah, sick, you know, that basic stuff. But as for really hardship-type case, we don't really have many that have, thank goodness that we, that I know of. But possibly I didn't feel good, so didn't come to school. And then, we call them and we say, "Well, you can come here and see the nurse. Thank goodness, it's free healthcare. She will let you know if you didn't actually need to go to a doctor, or if you can lay here for a few minutes and go to class." Really try to press that. So, one way to look at it.
Yeah.
So, all tier, three tiers of-
So all tier, um, three tiers of supports that Dr. Smith alluded to are all evidence-based practices. They're the greeting students at the door, the tier two supports, which is mentors, and then tier three supports, which is mentors on steroids, which, because they meet with the kids on a more regular basis. And it's all about building positive relationships with kids so that whenever a kid, a child, a student comes to school, they have somebody that they can have a conversation with if they're not feeling comfortable or whatever. So, so it is evidence-based and.
Again, that's the key, just establishing relationships with the kids. It's as simple, it seems very simple, but it's so important to get them to want to come or just to contact one of our teachers or one of our custodians, our cafeteria ladies, everybody in the building.
I was glad to hear, Dr. Smith, you said, you know, you assign a teacher to that student, but you let the student kind of choose also. So it's not just, they may get along with you great, but they don't get along with Ms. Shepherd, and all of a sudden they're stuck with Ms. Shepherd, so.
That's hard to believe.
And it is. It's impossible. But I didn't want to do, go in reverse. So, but that is good. It is about the relationship, the rapport, and the trust factor, so. Keep, keep doing what you're doing. Keep moving, keep moving forward. I know you can get there.
We will, one way or the other, we're going to get there. Last year, we were twenty-nine percent chronic absenteeism. Our goal this year is to be twenty through twenty-four. If we can get that, that would be a huge, huge increase or decrease, I guess, from in years past, so.
How do you, how do you, Dr. Smith, how do you overcome that comment on bored in school? When I was teaching, I used to get that all the time. I didn't really know how to respond to it. Tried to make class more exciting and things like that.
Well, absolutely. Well, we're dealing with students now who have our instant gratification. They have to know it. They want to hold their phone or their computer. And then you have a teacher up there that's, that's basically teaching like they're leaving at the school. So trying to get teachers to interface more technology standards, trying to spruce things up a bit. It's what has been going on for a long time and it's just continuing to get, where we can get teachers to see that and see what they, what the kids are like. It's almost to the point in some towns where it has to not teach it with verifi, you have to entertain it. It is true, because if you don't, then they're not going to be interested.
Is there a great, great level difference?
Not actually every, uh, not really. It's not senior. The older ones miss a little more, but it's not really that drastic of a difference. Not like I thought it was going to be.
Our kindergartners and our, not that he has kindergartners, but our kindergartners and our twelfth graders are the highest chronically absent students, so. And then, you know, eleventh grade and first probably, and then it kind of is about the same from there.
Anything else for Dr. Smith and Ms. Shepherd? Nothing seen. Thank you so much. Next up on the agenda is custodial service contract. Mr. Littis.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
As most of you are aware, state procurement regulations require us, after so many years, specifically five years, to recompete our major service agreements that we have to operate and maintain the schools. Our current agreement with ADM, formerly GCA, some of you may remember them. They're our current provider. We are in the final renewal year of their contract. We are scheduled to, that contract will expire June thirty of this coming year. We have revised the scope of work to put it out. It's had the blessing of our attorneys. And it has been posted in three, three ways. One, it's put on the state procurement website already. It's live, was live Monday. I've actually received four inquiries from that state website. It's been sent directly to six, I think maybe seven vendors directly, vendors that we know firsthand. And then three, it will be advertised in the Northern Virginia Daily beginning this weekend. So I believe there's been a change in a house bill that doesn't require us, if we post on the state website either. I think that new house bill now allows us not to have to post in the local paper or a local paper. We have the option to do so. So it has been posted in the NV Daily also, and it should be out today's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So it will be posted in that. So I am hoping that, just based on the even the responses I've received so far, that we're going to get good participation from vendors. This is our largest service agreement that the facilities management office has out there. Valued at approximately one point nine million this year, so it's, it's a big contract. So the more participation we get, the better off we're going to be. Couple of key dates coming up. There is a mandatory pre-bid conference we've got scheduled for the third of February. That includes a meeting right here in this office and then a walkthrough tour of all the schools. Bids will be due March thirteenth. That's when the proposals will be received and a committee will sit down and evaluate all of those proposals. And then we will come back to the board with a recommendation for award beginning one July, so.
Questions, comments from truancy? Eva website is the way to go. For anything, for anything.
Yeah, I was surprised. Three of the inquiries were out of state.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. The thing is.
Mr. Valentine posted our superintendent search firm on the, superintendent's search RFP on the Eva and we received none.
Wow, wow. So everybody reads it.
EVA, Eva, electronic Virginia.
Yep, yeah, it's for any trade, you just name it. You can look on this and you get bid jobs all over, all over. So it's pretty impressive.
It's a good website.
Well, thank you very much for your update, sir. All right, next thing, fiscal twenty twenty-one budget information. Ms. Shepherd, Mr. Valentine.
Thank you. The information Mr. Valentine is going to share, share with you this evening is preliminary. The information he presents does not include some of the increases that we know are going to be part of our budget, like the one percent VRS increase we're anticipating. As we work through the budget process, any request from our office here will be vetted through an instructional lens. So with an instructional focus. As you know, it is our goal that all of our schools are, are accredited. And at this time, I'm going to give you, I'm going to ask Mr. Valentine to give you the specifics of the information included in the governor's budget.
Okay, well, we will begin with the handout that I've given you. And Erin will appreciate the fact I've put a little subliminal message on there.
Is that the one school bus you were going to get?
Yeah, that's the one. One you'll get. So, that's the only thing I can find that references, that had school on it, so.
Plan to see you.
The first page, well, first of all, state revenue is an important and a large part of our budget, as is the county appropriation. Those two make up the vast majority of it, along with some federal revenue and then miscellaneous type of fees we collect and things like that. So the general assembly began their current session, which is a long session. They'll do a two-year budget this cycle. They began that on Wednesday, January the eighth, and I've got a list here of some of the key dates. I highlighted in blue ones that we're sort of interested in. February eleventh is what's called crossover. That's when the House sends the Senate their bills. The Senate sends the House their bills and the bills cross over to each body. And then the big date we always look forward to is March the seventh, which is when the session is scheduled to adjourn. It doesn't always happen that way. There was one year where they didn't actually adopt the budget till June, which put everybody in the state in a, in a terrible position. We can't issue contracts to our teachers or anything till we have an approved budget. And without the state portion of it, it's, it's impossible to do that. So we are hopeful that they will work together well and come up with a budget that's good for everyone by March the seventh, when they adjourn. Then the governor, he can look at it and he has to decide whether he's going to amend any of the, any of the bills that have been passed or if he's going to veto them, and then they come back for a reconvened session. Typically, once the, the, the general assembly comes to agreement and presents it to the governor, at least our part of the budget, the education part, it usually doesn't change a whole lot, but there's no guarantee that couldn't happen. So that's the schedule with, with the general assembly as far as that portion of the budget goes. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer those for you. So when we look at state revenue, there are a number of factors that really drive what we get from the state. One of those is the, our average daily membership, which we abbreviate ADM, and is based on our March thirty-first. So we really don't know until March thirty-first, or really sometime thereafter, how much state revenue exactly we'll get. We can estimate it pretty close, but it's important when we take the template the state gives us, because everything's based on, almost everything on a per pupil amount. So we have to be pretty close in that, and we try to err on the conservative side. We feel it's better to slightly underestimate the number of students we have than overestimate. Because if we overestimate, we build expenditures in and we won't have the revenue to support them. And as you all are aware, we are not allowed to spend one penny more than what we take in in revenue or the amount that the board of supervisors has appropriated to us. So we can't do like the federal government and print money and spend more money than we make, but that's, that's a good thing. It, it, it's good. So the membership, and that's always a little bit tricky. We, we have methods of projecting what our membership will be, taking historical trend as students progress from first to second grade, what the change is, and projecting that forward. It's called the cohort survival method. And then we take live births five years earlier and try to collate that to how many kindergartners actually show up from the number of births here in the county, and it's still tricky. And as a matter of fact, this, this past year, last year, we actually saw a decrease. If you look at the chart there, you can see, oh, going back to the turn of the century, where we were. We were rather steadily up until about the time we hit the Great Recession. And we were really flat there for, you know, five, six, seven years. We had a spike back in around twelve thirteen and thirteen fourteen. We believe that that is due to the number of employees that were out here at Dominion Power Plant, who actually, they moved and moved their families. And we had quite a few of those students that were in our membership those two years. So we, we had good numbers those year, and that, that helps our state revenue. Our state revenue roughly is about four thousand dollars per pupil. So, you know, a swing of a hundred is, is four hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's significant to us. Then it dropped back down and sort of plateaued until last year. And it dropped, and I'm not sure, we're sure why it dropped, other than if you look at the births five years earlier, there was some trending down at that point for that, and, you know, we don't know why. But this year, right now, we're at about fifty-two twenty. We're actually running above that now. Typically, when you start the year, and particularly before Labor Day, your membership is smaller. Folks from out of state move in and, and things like that. Maybe their schools didn't start till after Labor Day, so they don't move until now and that. But right now, we're at about fifty-two forty, couple, I think. So I think we'll be fine at the fifty-two twenty and actually maybe go a little higher. We based our budget this year one fifty-one fifty. And so we ought to be in good shape and actually have some extra state revenue that once we're a little more sure of the exact amount, we'll come to you and ask possibly for an additional appropriation so we can receive and spend that money for some things I know the superintendent's thinking about. So that's our membership. What, what we did was, so for next year's budget, we based our membership on fifty-two twenty. And the state projects it too, when they give us that next page is their template showing it. They projected fifty-two twenty-two for both this year, this coming year, and the following year of the biennium. We just rounded it to fifty-two twenty because that's sort of where we're at right now. And again, want to be on the safe side of that. We'd rather have extra revenue than be short and have to make cuts to a budget during the year, which is difficult because a lot of things have been committed. I won't go through the items. It shows the two fiscal years. I typically don't look a whole lot at the second year because the general assembly will meet again next year this time. They'll make amendments. The governor will make amendments to it. And quite honestly, a lot of it depends on what tax collections are. And if you've probably read tax collections, sales tax, income tax, and recuperation fees, those things are up at a pretty good pace right now. And if they hold like that, and that's, you'll see here when we flip the page, our state revenue is jumping up and it's because the state economy is in good condition. No one knows what it'll be like a year from now, so it could change. And if you'll flip over to the next page, or really the last page, that's our revenue sheet that we look at, broken out. On the left-hand, the left-hand side of it is all of our state revenue, and this is based on the governor's proposed budget. It's based on bumping. If you look at the one column that's approved for this year and the proposed, although I spelled propose wrong, I see, for twenty twenty-one, we're bumping the membership up by seventy to that fifty-two fifty, fifty-two twenty number we talked about. You can see basic aid, and you come down the column, you can see the different components of state aid that have increased or decreased. The one in the second category under incentive programs, if you come down the one, two, three, four, five, fifth item, is a compensation supplement. This year, the state has given us eight hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars for a compensation. It's an incentive. It's their fair share of providing a raise for all of our employees. It costs a lot more than that to do it, so there has to be local effort to match that. They don't pay for the whole thing, but that's their quote-unquote fair share. That is not proposed in next year's governor's budget, although we hear there may be talk in the general assembly of splitting it up over a couple of years. So we'll have to stay tuned to see if the state will provide any incentive for us to give our employees a salary increase for the coming year. Although for the second year of the biennium, there is that increase. So when you come down to the bottom, it has a two million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, twenty-seven dollar increase in state funding. That's significant, but don't get too excited yet. There are some things. It doesn't all come without strings attached or there's, you know, other drivers that, that are affected by that. The right-hand column breaks out our federal, our miscellaneous, and then our county appropriation. I've left them the same, level funded for next year, just for illustrative purposes, so you could see the bottom line effect of the state, the governor's proposed budget. See that in isolation from any other changes. And quite honestly, federal revenue, that's all reimbursable revenue, almost all of it. So if it goes up, we have to add an expenditure to the budget. Or if it goes down, we have to take something out from one of those programs to balance it. So it's pretty much budget neutral, what happens there. There's no windfall if, if our federal revenue jumps because we've got to put expenditures in that we have to pay and then get reimbursed from them. So that one isn't as, it doesn't affect the bottom line as much. And our miscellaneous revenue in, in, in total isn't that big a percentage. And of course, our county appropriation is also a large percentage of our, our budget. The, the other thing is up at the top of the right-hand side, there's called the composite index. And that is the local composite index. It gauges our, each locality's ability to pay and is based on a number of factors in, that they look at for each county and say that, okay, this says that Warren County has an ability to pay forty-four point three two percent of the budget. And then the state would pay the other sixty-five point six, five, whatever, percent of the budget through, through what they fund. So ours went up ever so slightly, but that does have an impact on us from the last two years. This rate will be good, the four-four-three-two will be good for the next two budget years. And then they do it, and it's based on property value, the value of property, sales tax collections, and then gross or at family in, average income for the county. And it's based on two thousand, this one's particular, one is based on two thousand seventeen numbers. So there's a lag between when, when it's reported and then when you actually do it. But everybody's in that same boat. But everybody's in that same boat. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about the revenue side or the state revenue there. Again, as I mentioned, that, that is a nice increase for the state, a larger one than we've seen in a while, and I think it's attributed to two things. One, we can bump our membership up, and that brings us additional revenue from that. And then also, the state is, I think, you know, doing quite well and has money available to provide in their budget to not only schools, but I would imagine to every other department and agency and, and function within the state. One thing that I'll, I'll mention that'll probably detract from this a little bit, the state sets our VRS, Virginia Retirement System. That's the rate we pay into the retirement fund on behalf of our employees. That's in addition to the 5% of their salary that our employees pay. Right now, the, the rate is going up next year and for the next two years by 97 hundredths of a percent, let, a little bit less than 1%, which, oh, gosh, that's not much, but when you multiply that by a roughly $33 million salary budget, that's about $324,000, $325,000 that we'll have to come up with. So, that'll whittle away at the additional revenue we have. Another big unknown we never know about until about a month from now or later this month is our health insurance. And we were very fortunate, this year, we had no increase from last year. I just get nervous when that happens then the following year, because healthcare costs are going up, and, you know, we're just nervous. I think it'll be the end of this month, maybe when we get our renewal.
It should be the end of January, the 1st of February, before we'll know those rates. And you want them to go as far into that year as possible, because that should get you a better experience, because you're sprinting out over a longer period of time.
So, to give you an idea on that, this current year, our budget for the employer-only contribution for healthcare for all of our employees is just over $5 million. So, if it goes up one, goes up only 1%, that's another $51,657, and that would require the employee to pick up their portion of it too. It wouldn't, you know, keep their premiums level either. So, you know, and, and a 10% increase isn't out of the question, what we've seen over the years. So, that's, you know, close to half a million dollars right there. It could. We're hopeful it won't. We hope we get a renewal that's good, and we won't have to do anything with it, but just as something to remember. And then, a salary increase for all contracted employees, full-time employees, each 1% is just over $400,000. So, you know, you start multiplying that times 2, 2 and 1/2, or whatever number you might come up with, it eats away pretty quick at, at what we have, and then that's not counting our need for textbooks, for buses, and, which we've been really negligent on keeping them in the cycle of replacement. And, and just utilities, everything like that, any of those other things will have to be factored in, and plus any initiatives that we want to do. Ms. Shepherd mentioned about making sure all of our schools are accredited without condition, and, and that it's going to take some emphasis in some areas to support our students, so that we can do that. So, it, it's always a challenging budget year. I, I think this year, having that additional state revenue is the first in a while that we've seen that much from the state, so that, that should give us cause to, to at least be hopeful that we can accomplish some of those initiatives that are important to everybody.
Do you have, do you have at this point even a preliminary figure on the second phase of the salary adjustment?
I, I don't have a real good number yet. We need to adjust it now for the folks that are here. We had a number last year. I hesitate to throw out, off the top of my head, a number that may not be accurate, either from my memory or from actually applying it to the folks that are here today. We will be working on that. What we would like to do, if you're, you're, would like to do this at your February 5th, I think, meeting, we'd like to have a work session maybe after it, and at that point, we'll be able to go into a lot of the cost drivers, the cost of the increase, cost of Phase 2, and, and these different initiatives, and, and share that with you, and sort of see how that matches up to, those expenses match up to the revenue that we were projecting.
Not really for you, Mr. Valentine, but for Mr. Mitchell. Was it two buses last year we replaced, or four? I can't remember.
It's total, since I've been here.
Well, we did four this last.
Four this past, past...
But I think total, we've done six.
Yeah, but, but we went many years without touching any buses, correct? So, I mean, you probably need four more this year. Probably. I mean, I mean, reality. I mean, think about it. Get the numbers together, because that's a safety thing.
We have them.
We, we've actually put together a forecast, and I've shared with Ms. Shepherd, that if we replaced three buses a year, every five years, if we did five, if we did 10, and basically, what would it take? And we actually ran this out till 35 years to determine what would it take to actually have every bus within DOE's recommendation for a replacement cycle. So, I, we have all that.
Okay, great, great.
Yeah, just a, the number I keep in my mind, and, and we hadn't been able to keep up with this, so we're way far behind. But roughly 60 buses, and the state says you can expect to get 15 years is what they fund them on now. It used to be 12. So, if it is 15, that means you'd have to replace four every year.
Right.
And as you mentioned in the past, how many 10 years we've only replaced it six, replaced six, whereas we should have replaced 40. So, we're, we're behind.
Yeah, but, but, just like everything else, you can't overcome it.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you can't overcome it.
Well, and part of it too, we're really blessed having the shop that we have.
Oh, amen.
Those, those guys, you would not believe the stuff that they do, make, and...
They make it last.
It is amazing. It really is. We're, we're truly blessed to have the staff that we do, and, and they get all the credit for keeping those things going. They really do.
Mr. Valentine mentioned a little earlier about, we have more students this year than we had anticipated, so that's going to be, bring in a little bit of increased revenue. So, we may be able to use some of that money to purchase a bus this year, and one of the other things that we've neglected is textbooks, and we need to start putting some money in our textbook funds. And, and then also, we may have some carryover money from the 2018, 19 school year, which could be allocated to purchasing buses or putting towards textbook funds. So, those are, those are all one-time expenses that you can kind of put in those, those areas in order to, so we've been, you know, kind of thinking outside the box, as well as, as including some information in our budget, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Anything else from Mr. Valentine or Ms. Shepherd? Any other business? None being heard. Meeting adjourned. Have a good night.
All right.